6:01. I'm turning the recorder on. It is 6:01 PM. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. This is the Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jim Sayers.
Luann Hook.
Ann Lepinen.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
Brandt Murray is excused for this meeting. Then, the first item is the approval of the Bluff Town Council Work Session Minutes of October 3rd, 2023. Has everybody read them? Are there any changes, modifications?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four ayes. Next is approval of the Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting Minutes of October 3rd, 2023. Has everybody received them? Have you read it? And are there any changes or modifications?
Motion to approve on those.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Four ayes. They're approved. Then last is approval of the Bluff Town Council Special Meeting Minutes of October 5th, 2023. Has everybody received them? Are there any changes or modifications?
Motion to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then we're a public comment. There will be a three-minute time limit for each person wanting to make a public comment. If you exceed the three-minute time limit without permission, the meeting controller will mute you. Signal before the meeting starts by putting your name in the chat box or raise the hand icon if you wish to make a public comment. And to the Town Manager, are there any public comments?
I just see that Jim Sayers has his hand raised, and that would be it.
Jim.
Thank you. This isn't exactly a public comment, but on behalf of the Town Council, I'd like to acknowledge a, make our acknowledgement on Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that is that the Bluff Town Council acknowledges that Bluff Town is on land traditionally known to, used, or occupied by several known Native American tribal people or their ancestors, the Navajo, the Ute, and the Pueblo peoples and others. Bluff Town Council respects this fact and takes it into account in conducting ourselves in positive and constructive ways as we provide helpful local government for our community. And again, this is in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have a number of, what we consider our community members who rely on us for our judgment. We should keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. That was very well said. Then, the first item on the unfinished business is the update on the Annular Solar Eclipse Committee work. And a call for volunteers by Erin Nelson.
Yeah, so I really appreciate the community stepping up. We had sent out some emails asking for additional volunteers to the Day of the Eclipse. So I do have our parking lots pretty well staffed now. We've got four to five people at each of the parking lots, which should be really helpful between 7:00 and 9:00 AM. So that's just really appreciated. Certainly, we still need folks to help pull goat heads over north of the school. That lot is still in pretty rough shape. They did spray. But when I was over there yesterday afternoon, there are just a lot of seeds still over there. Plants. So the dumpsters there and the trash bags are there. So if folks have a few minutes, take some gloves. But that is probably our biggest need right now. And then internally, we need to work out. There were, Brandt was able to pick up most of our supplies over in Farmington today, but there were a few things that just did not fit because we have so many cones and barriers. So we do need to find a way to go get some additional supplies probably tomorrow. And that includes things like toilet paper and water, as well as some sign stands. So we're working on that. I think everyone should be pretty well-versed at this point regarding kind of what the town's plans are. Information was mailed out. There's information on our website. You know, certainly, I encourage people, if they have questions, they can shoot me an email or give me a call. But really, I will be touching base with all the volunteers over the next couple of days. We're getting the parking lot set up tomorrow and Thursday. And then people should expect those road barriers to be, they'll be staged over the next few days and in place by Friday morning. Of course, residential access is exempt from those road closures. But people should expect those in place. And then our airport manager is going to be working diligently to keep folks out of the airport. That's a really important emergency services space for us. And we've been working on communications internally. We have radios that all the volunteer teams will have. And then between Bluff Fire, EMT, and ourselves, we actually have quite a few first responders and first aid folks who will be on hand that day. So a huge, huge thanks to the community. And I guess at this time, I can field any questions from council members if you have any questions about what's planned. Like I said, I know this has been a long time coming, but this is the last meeting before the eclipse on Saturday, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Erin? Well, a lot of work has gone into this. I think we'll all be happy to get through Saturday and Sunday. But thank you, Erin, for all the work. I don't need to do the update on the north lot because Erin covered that. Just, if you have 10 minutes and you want to do a little public work, head on over to the elementary school and get a few goat heads out of there. And then Jim, number two is the update on Cooperative Cultural Center meeting that was today, and then the ceiling removal. Erin?
Yeah, the Cooperative Culture Center's meeting was only about less than a half an hour. Mayor attended, and myself and Dave, Dave Conine came in later. There are, there have been some administrative changes at UDB. Woody Lee is a consultant. I think he's in the directorship until January or December, but he's essentially going to be a consulting role. They're looking for a director. They're also looking for a accountant. And they've got an temp going now, and I know Linda has that email or is in contact with Woody over that. So that's, that kind of got squared away. There was a little rough, rough water there. No word on any of the grants, except that we know that our EPA grant, according to Erin via the mayor, mayor is, has not been eliminated yet. And I guess they're eliminating grants as they go along and notifying the eliminatees, if you want to call them that. And we haven't gotten that word yet, so we seem to still be in the running. And that's good news. I anticipate that that may be, that may be really coming up really well for us, but we'll see. The recycling, I guess the first episode of recycling occurred in tandem with the food pantry on Friday. And it went all right. And I guess that's the way it should be for right now, anyway. We opened the gates and we related that all to UDB. No comment on that. No word on the firewood that was brought up last week or the last couple of weeks. No word yet and probably won't be any for a while. There are, we did relate to UDB that we've got all these eclipse plans in place. And we've, it looks like there's going to be a crowd, and so we all know about that. And we're all as prepared, I guess, as anybody could possibly be for something like this, thanks to Erin's hard work and the mayor's. Beyond that, I believe we had a little discussion about, we did relate to UDB that we've had, we voted to turn down the application for disconnect, the petition for disconnect was voted to, we voted to turn that down. And, and so we kind of know what's coming down the pike a little bit. And there was a little discussion about some legislative actions up in Salt Lake. Dave Conine is familiar with, and I've read a little bit about it, that some of these towns are looking for either BLM land or state land to build affordable, affordable housing on. And he is trying to get them to specify built by nonprofits. That would be very helpful. I think it would all, it's also a very futile endeavor in the state right now. The climate is really, you know, private profit. So anyway, that's it. Did I miss anything on that?
Nope. You covered it quite well.
Thank you very much. If any questions, let me know.
Hearing no questions, we'll, I'll just touch on the ceiling removal. That's getting underway. We got a key to Weldon Building, and that's moving along, so. Stay tuned on that. Then, number three, update on the November 21st, 2023 Town of Bluff Elections and the Candidate Forum reminder for October 18th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. All four candidates have agreed to have a public forum on Wednesday, October 18th. Unfortunately, it does overlap with planning and zoning's meeting. But given how this month went, and the fact that the ballots are allegedly being mailed on the 19th or 20th, it just seemed like we had to squeeze it in somewhere. Melissa Eggy will be moderating it. And it will be probably more questions and answers from the audience than through the moderator. We do not have any word on the canvassing. Try as I might, I have not had a response to any of my requests from San Juan County to tell us what we need to be doing and where we need to be doing it. So my next step will be the Lieutenant Governor's Office to try to figure this out. Any questions?
Just one, is the Candidates Forum going to be virtual as well?
Yes, it'll be hybrid. So you can come in person or be virtual. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
And Luann?
That was my question too. Virtual and in-person and on YouTube?
Yes, assuming that our technician is available, yes.
Okay, but it's at the exact same time as planning and zoning, so hopefully. Okay, okay.
I tried to figure out any other way to do it, but there was just nothing to be able to get it in.
Is it just an hour later? Because they get done at 7:00?
So I looked at 7:00. The problem is, is that conflicts with people being able to be here at 7:00 instead of at 6:00. I looked at 5:00. 5:00 felt too early for people.
Okay, that's fine. I just, just checking if we can hear the recording and whatnot, that'll be.
Yeah.
Fine.
And if you have questions and you can't attend, you can always email either me or Erin the questions, and we can get them to the moderator. I think that would work.
Okay.
And again, I really, if we hadn't had the eclipse in this week, it just, we just couldn't find any more time. So I apologize again. Then number four, report on planning and zoning's October 4th, 2023 meeting. Lu?
Yes, so that was, yeah, October 4th, they had their regular scheduled meeting. They didn't have any land use clearances. But they did, they have been working on the sign ordinance, are trying to tweak that a little bit. And they also have, the main concern right now is a few signs at businesses that are not included in the sign ordinance. And those are the wavy signs, the colorful ones that you can order and put in the ground or attach to signs and whatnot. So they're concerned about that. They're not sure exactly what they do for the enforcement part from coming from them. But I believe they were going to check in with the mayor and see about that. They, let's see, their next meeting is the 18th, which is next week, Wednesday will be their last one of October. The other main thing that went on, on that last meeting was Molly Schmidt presented the Active Transportation Plan to them. She showed the screen and kind of ran through the, the parts that she wanted to highlight. And then they will look at it through the week and then look at it again on October 18th and be ready to send a recommendation to Town Council at that point. But that was pretty much that meeting.
Do you have?
Let me move over.
So are you taking the Active Transportation Plan up to the meeting on the 12th?
I don't have one printed. I was kind of hoping to have one printed.
Are you, I thought, are you presenting?
Oh, am I presenting? No, it's more of, what it will be is it's set up more like the other ones that they've done where they'll give a presentation of, this is a whole new division of UDOT. So they will be presenting what they have established and then what their plans are and what they're, how they will work to get this thousand-mile trail system into place and how they'll, how they'll, you know, approach it, how to get it done. So then we'll break out into tables, and each table will discuss their region and their ideas. And then those ideas will come back to the group presented as a summary. And then they take all of that back to Salt Lake and decide what they're going to do next and what, what the priority is. So that's why I wanted to be able to have, you know, the, the whole thing with me, but I, I'd like to take a printed copy. But that's, there's not like any presentation time, unfortunately, so.
Well, that sounds great. I, I hope if it comes up, if our plan comes up, it's clear that it's not, it's not actually our plan. It's not approved yet. But it sounds really good. So I'm glad you're going.
Right. Jim?
Yeah, is Molly going?
She's planning to. I haven't talked to her the last few or two, but she's planning to be there.
Yeah, I would just recommend, you know, as both a member of the Transportation Committee and this council, that we speak with a single voice, that, you know, unless Molly asks for something, she's, she's a fine presenter. And, and I think it will be more effective if it's just one, one person. You know, if there are some questions, of course, you know, anybody else who's there, I may be there myself. But I, I would expect to be, be quiet. So I, I really think it's important that we make sure that she's, she's doing that.
Yeah, hopefully she'll, hopefully she'll be able to be there. But even like online, so Anne is planning to be there on virtual attendance. And so what it is, is it's listening to the presentation. And then each little group, so the virtual group will get to discuss their plans in their area, each table. So hopefully we'll be spread out at different tables and be able to talk about different things, so we can all come home with the regions, plans. The county will be there, Moab will be there, and so on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Lu.
Yeah, you're welcome. And then, and Jim, if you want to be online, that works. Or if you want to be in person, it's at the Grand, Moab Grand Center. And I'm taking the van if you want to ride.
Thank you.
Carpool up. It's over there by the hospital, south of the hospital, just a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Fifth West. Any other questions back to V and Z?
No, I think that's it. Anybody else? All right, then moving to number five, the Bluff Town Council's practice of gets and whips application. Luann? Why do you date us where we are?
Yep, so I wanted it on the agenda mostly just to be able to check in one last time with you all to make sure that we've got it. And then as far as the public's concerned, if there's an emergency, we do have that option to call out. And we have, Gary Litchencey got our radio functioning again at the lodge. They'll have their command center set up at the fire station. But at any point when the cell phones don't work, these cards are a result of 9/11. And they, because everything just plugs up and shuts down. And so it's likely that our Wi-Fi and especially our cell towers, they get overloaded pretty easily, even with, even, you know, cell towers especially, and we'll see about fiber, but it seems to get hit hard too. So there'll be people, not just in Bluff, but in this whole region. So it, it, just expect that. Don't panic if your phone doesn't work. It probably won't text or call. But these cellphone cards give us an access number. And I've checked with almost everybody on, personally with everybody at the fire department and EMS, and any of them that weren't working worked fine. If you flip them over, there's a number on the backside that says if you're not getting through with the access number on the front, flip it over, and there are a few numbers on the back. We did that with one today, and it went right through. Had an operator, the operator asks you the phone number, your PIN, your phone number, you're dialing, and so on. So anyway, there, everybody's got them. I also have a couple spares. Also have a hurricane 30-day card that they issued that is just good for 30 days. And that one is shareable, so if somebody wants somebody else to have it, it'll work for 30 days.
Well, thanks. I'm going to give mine a try again tomorrow and maybe add another number or two.
Yeah, it'd be good to, good to practice them, you know, before you need them, but otherwise, just remember your backups. And remember that the, the Wi-Fi calling doesn't work, and there's not a phone at the fire station. So if you want a landline, go to, somebody has a landline, we've got a couple at the lodge. Hopefully that won't be the, the case that we need it, but if you do, just don't go to something that's not there.
All right. If there are no other questions, then we'll move to number six. So it's a request to approve purchase of an eight-foot by 20-foot storage container for the Bluff Community Center remodel at a cost of $5,000. So the quandary was, when we start the remodel in the BCC, the Bluff Community Center, how do we negotiate all the things that are in these rooms? There are three or four offices, the secure file room, and then the room that stores all the extra tables and chairs that are not in the utility closets and the gym. So Erin and I did a fair amount of researching individually and together, looking at options. We talked to Sam Weldon about how we could shift things from one area to another. Way back, if you remember when we did the CDBG application, we had a component in there for a storage container so that we would be able to clear up some of these spots and have that storage container be a permanent one. Either built to replace the shed that's out there or buy one. And it seemed, bottom line, when we got all the way back around, it looked like that was the easiest, the most practical, the most usable. And then should we be able to move into the CCC at some point, this would be a good storage area for over there. So I did some pricing and was able to find a new, so storage containers come in two types, used and new. And the used ones, I ended up connecting with Brett Black in Blanding. And the new ones are about for that size, eight, eight by 20 foot, right around $5,000. When I looked at getting one from Salt Lake City, the transport was outrageous to bring it down here. If you look at the used ones, what I learned was used means just exactly that. It could have dents in it. It could have pretty significant damage. It's not supposed to have holes, but Brett said that occasionally is the situation. So he goes up to Salt Lake and picks containers up, rehabs them, and brings them back. But he happens to have a new storage container because something went awry, and he has a new container that he's willing to sell us for $5,000. And he would bring it down and, you know, help us figure out where it goes. And he's actually going to come down, I think, tomorrow and take a look at the BCC to see where, I hadn't even thought about this, like, level. It needs to be level, and where could we put it? So he's going to come down and talk to us. But assuming that this is something that is manageable here, I'm asking that we approve the purchase so that we can pay for it and get it moved down here then before the construction starts right around kind of in the ballpark of the Arts Festival.
I could make a motion here, if you allow it, Mayor, to allow you to use your judgment in making the decision on this purchase. And I'm assuming you're, you're thinking not over $5,000. That's what this would cost, right?
Right.
So that would be for $5,000. Your, your judgment, the more you guys find out about it, if you make that decision, then just go for it. That's the motion. It's a little convoluted, but I think you get the picture.
I'll second it.
And I should add that Steve Helgerson works with Brett Black on Thursdays. They have a, a deal that they work on. Steve has actually inspected it, and it is new and it's suitable. And he said it's a good deal for the price. So any more discussion?
I just, curious, maybe I missed it, but I know it'll be storage, but will it also just be where they set up computers and office space? Or will they be able to, where will they be during the construction?
Who are they?
The Linda and Erin and Kathy and.
No, we're all, everybody's going to have to go probably home or come into the auditorium. This is purely storage to get all those chairs out, the office furniture. Linda's going to have to take the computer probably home to be able to do the books. Yeah, and my guess is that maybe, other than Erin, moving from office to office. But I'll definitely go back home 100%.
Okay.
Anything else? Then all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then number seven is a discussion and vote to pay Weldon Builders a deposit of $11,016 for the purchasing materials for the Cooperative Cultural Center Ceiling Removal Project for the signed contract. So this would be for getting the initial start right now. My understanding is there's a worker over there and all, and hopefully an electrician in the next few days to start removing all the electrical and computer hookups and getting those removed so that the actual, excuse me, ceiling tear, tear down can occur.
This, what would these, just out of curiosity, what would these materials, an example of some of these materials be? Do you have any idea?
So Erin, are you?
I don't think this was, I don't think this was necessarily materials. It's just how the contract is formed, that this is approximately a third of, so we pay a third, and then a third halfway through, and then a third at the end of it. So it's just the initial payment.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I mean, materials for demolition of a ceiling, you know, it's, they're pretty, they're pretty crude tools, you know?
Yeah, actually, I think I, what I did is, I'm having a hard time keeping track of which project we're talking about, so that's my mistake. I worded that incorrectly.
Gotcha. Okay. Actually, I, I vote, or I, I make the motion to go ahead and approve this payment.
Is there a second?
Second, I just muted, sorry.
You hear the discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then number eight is discuss and vote to reimburse Malia Collins $1,497.88 for Dark Sky's lighting fixtures for both the Community Center and the Cultural Center. And this is in regard to two things. One is to become compliant in our own buildings with our ordinance exterior outside lighting. And then the second is to do it before the is to do it before the, before the eclipse, if at all possible, but in compliance with our agreements and the strategic planning to make our buildings compliant and have that be a first step in our building management.
And this does not include the installation, which is going to be a separate charge. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
There's a message here from Malia. She's on the call. She says they're just for the community center. They're not for the old school. The old school will go through some design, I would think, to decide where they'll be and whatnot. And I'm not sure if it went through the Dark Sky Committee. I didn't know about them, but I looked at what was sent, and I sent her some ideas. It'd be nice to be able to turn them off outside and that kind of thing. So anyway, that, the fixtures themselves look great if they come in as they are, and she needs to reimburse. She ended up having to spend her funds. So I agree.
Then all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then number nine is the review of the Bureau of Land Management's Fry Canyon Mill Reclamation Borrowal Pit Addendum. And we had this on the agenda some time ago. This is just an additional notification from the BLM. Did everybody read it? And does anybody feel that we should be taking some action?
Looks good.
Luanne's muted, but...
Yeah, I just feel like it's pretty much out of our area for commenting to the BLM.
Well, we are a cooperative partner. That's why we get the notice. But no one has an issue, then. We can just let this one go. No action needs to be taken.
All right.
I feel like we, we should find things to talk about so that we can drag this out since we have hardly anything to do this week. Brett, other? Are there any other others?
Well, I don't know. If you want to keep talking, we could come up with something, I'm sure. But other than that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn as soon as possible.
It's 6:33 p.m. If no one has another, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, everyone. Have a good week and a great eclipse. I'm turning that recorder off.
Thank you. You, too. Bye.